Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for attending this meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. The meeting stays open to the public and the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We have not received any public questions or petitions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Please require requests that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test plan for today, so if the alarm does go off, that will mean an emergency evacuation and please take instruction from town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. I will ask each committee policy, policy committee member in turn to introduce yourselves and this week I'll start this way. Thank you.
I'm councillor Malaka Hebe for Brumhill and Sherrville.
I'm councillor Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleiths Valley and substitute for Marouf
Good afternoon, my name's Diane Hurst and I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Chaplin, I'm councillor for Southie Ward and I'm subbing today possibly for councillor Nagat Basharat.
Councillor Anne Whittaker, West Ecklesfield Ward.
Councillor Mohamed Marouf, Greys Park Ward and the group spokesperson for this committee.
Councillor Ian Horner, councillor for Baiton. This is not working.
Councillor Karen McGowan, Burley Ward and I'm a substitute today.
Thank you. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and paper copies are available at the meeting. There is one agenda reports pack and one supplementary document for item eight. Please note that there is one appendix for item nine which is not available to the public and press because they contain exempt information described in paragraph three of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972. If members wish to discuss the information, we will need to ask the members of the public and press to kindly leave so that part of the meeting, we can stop the webcast. We have apologies for absence, please.
Thank you Chair, apologies from councillor Jane Dunn, councillor Nagat Basharat and councillor Marouf.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is exclusions of public and press and as just explained, we have one item on the agenda which may mean that we need to ask the members of the public to leave and the webcast to be halted. Item number three, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare a declaration of interest for any of the items discussed on today's agenda? Councillor Turpin.
I'm not sure if I need to check, but so I'll take your advice, school governor. Do I need to declare that?
No, I'm being advised by legal representation that no, that's fine, thank you. Item number four, minutes of the previous meeting which are on page 11 of the agenda reports pack. Would you like me to go through them page by page? So, page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14. Any matters arising from the meeting of the, it was December, it shouldn't feel like that long ago. I would just like to raise up one item. At the last meeting, we did agree to start a task and finish group to look at our school admissions policy. What I can update on is that there is a report outlining the scope of the task and finish group which will come to the committee on the 19th of March with a view to holding the first task and finish group the following week. Members who have expressed an interest are councillor Aouf, councillor Bashrat, councillor Whitaker and councillor Hurst. I think you'd expressed an interest in being at that, although that might have been under Julie Grok, I might have put you forward, sorry for that. So the group will need to be politically proportionate and officers will send out a expression of interest for anyone who's not already expressed an interest that would like to be involved in that task and finish group. Thank you. So we've got agenda item number five, we don't have any public questions or petitions and agenda item number six, members' questions, we haven't received any on this occasion. So agenda item number seven is the work programme, so over here, thank you.
Thank you Chair, I've nothing further to add from the work programme that's been published by Fiona. On pages 18 and 19, you'll see the new additions or the amendments and that's as it stands.
Have we got any questions or comments regarding the work programme? Councillor Malaka.
I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but the two referrals from the admission committee, one in regards to looked after children and the other with faith schools, has there been an update on that?
As I've just explained, we're doing a review of the admissions policy, so there'll be a task and finish group. So the task and finish group will look at that piece of work and then report back once the task and finish group is complete.
Yeah, these are just two specifics separate from the admissions.
You'll be able to talk about that potentially in the task and finish. All right, thank you.
In that case, can you put me down as a...
Will do. Thank you. That brings us on to item number eight which is school admissions, which is on page 33 of the agenda reports pack and presenting officer is John Beadley, welcome.
I must apologise, my voice, Chair, I'll do my best. Hopefully quite self-explanatory, it's the annual determination of admission arrangements for community and voluntary controlled schools. There haven't been any proposed changes, so no consultation this year. The requirement is to determine the admission arrangements for 25, 26. I'll stop there Chair, I'm happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions with regards to this paper? Councillor Turpin.
Thank you very much. So unfortunately, as a substitute, I didn't get a chance to feed into this when it was being worked up, well, I'll express my thoughts anyway. So as a councillor, the two main areas that I've come across, admissions issues, are when a parent has erroneously filled out a form, whether intentionally or unintentionally, and then their child is left without a school place near where they live. And the other one is when schools are setting out their, what do you call it in this tiny writing, their primary admission numbers and then they're undersubscribed, causing an issue of, you know, when there's half a classroom, but then obviously that still costs as much as a full classroom, you only half the income yet. So I wondered what is being done to tackle those two problems. I mean, I wondered as far as with the school setting out its numbers, if they say, if we don't get 55, then we'll only take 30 or, you know, I'm only completely making numbers up, you know. If there's a possibility of doing that and then with the parents, when it's really clear that their child hasn't got a place where they live because they've put the wrong schools on or, you know, you and I know what it means to fill in the form, but not everybody does. Thanks.
Okay, lots to unpick. Shall I start on the numbers? Because one of the appendices here is for schools to determine their admission number. So that's the, we publish that and once published, that's the number of places available. So if the school has 60 places and they have 50 allocations, they would simply start the year with 10 vacancies. Those vacancies are really important because we manage the first year into school, but of course, admissions go on all the time in all year groups. So the estate, if we call it that, there has to be some degree of vacant places across the city to allow for families moving into city or around the city. Now, one strategy that colleagues did work on in our school organisation team, because in primary school for reception children, there's a low birth rate, we're in a period of low birth rate now. So in anticipation of that, because it's an 18 month, two year lead in, so we're talking today about 25, 26. So some schools did reduce their admission numbers for 23, for 24 and for 25 in recognition or in anticipation of them having lower numbers. So there is provision to do that. Once the number is published however, it's more complex, it would have to be an application to the school's adjudicator to physically reduce that number. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Just my concern is that the financial pressure on the school if they've not got full classes, you know.
There are other strategies, there are funds that schools can call on if they have awkward class sizes and some schools might opt to mix classes. So if they've got an admission number of, say, 60 and across two years, they only had 90 kids, instead of having four classes, they might opt to mix one class and have three classes of 30. So that's quite a common strategy. But colleagues in our finance team do work closely with schools as well on mitigating against low numbers. Shall I come to the other question? That's the bane of my life, this other question. We make lots and lots of attempts to secure three preferences because parents can make up to three preferences. If you applied to my team and only submitted one, we would contact you and say, you really should put two more down. So we do everything we can in all our guidance. One of the key messages is not only use your three, but try and be sensible in the preferences that you're making and at least leave yourself with a good chance of at least one of those three. That's the message. We go out to open evenings at Y6, Y7 and we go out to primary schools. Some schools hold surgeries in Y6 that parents come to and we advise them then as well. I can share some numbers, we've got year seven allocation day on the 1st of March and we've got just over 97% that were given one of the three preferences. So it's a good outcome in that respect. There's, I think 145 didn't get any of their three and of those, 80 only submitted one preference and I think another 30 only submitted two. So that's what we really try and get after, but you can realistically only do so much. Ultimately, parents do have to take responsibility for submitting their preferences. Okay.
Got to say sorry for making your talk because it sounds really painful. Yeah, thank you very much.
Councillor Marouf.
Thank you Chair, I think John's answered my question, the one that Paul asked. I was just going to follow up on this because I think we raised it at a previous committee where people were choosing to just put one preference down and it always became a problem because every member's casework is actually full of people who've just put one down and then they don't get that place because they're outside the catchment and they're outside any sort of remit and the problem then starts, well, I only want that school. And there's two points, one you've answered already, so I won't make you answer that one again, but the second one is, is it done in sort of different languages as well? Because a lot of people, dare I say, not just generally, people use it as a tactic, saying if I only put one down and there's a myth operates within parents which is that if I put one down, they're going to have to give me that one, otherwise I'm not taking any other. So the question is, do we are getting that message across more than we have been in the past, have we?
Yes, I hope so and again, that's where schools are really helpful to us as well because I don't know the number of languages that we have in Sheffield. Years ago, we used to publish everything in five languages and clearly we have a lot more than five languages now. But we do rely on schools to help and we do physically support parents applying online in schools, so they'll make computers available in school. There are many myths, don't put three preferences, put the same preference three times, if you only put one, you've got a stronger chance, all incorrect. And they're the messages, we probably, we might not be getting that through to the people we really need to get through to. What some people do use it as a tactic as well.
Thank you for that John, because as I said, there's a lot of casework that follows on from that.
Yeah, and from our point of view, the more we do by way of prevention, it means fewer appeals and it means fewer letters to you. And I think more importantly, it means that kids have got an accessible school place to attend in September.
I totally agree with you, I think we're doing far more than we even need to do, but people still choose to use it as a way of trying to get into a certain school. The other question, I'll start with a simple one first and then I'll, you know, these numbers that you've gotten on this and I'm sure that people have understood it far better than I have. So where it says published admission number, that is the number of people, pupils that are allowed in for that year and then the proposed PAN, can you just explain those two?
Yeah, so PAN is a published admission number and every school must have one. So using the example from earlier, a primary school might have a two form entry, so it's built to accommodate 60 children from reception through to year six. So the capacity for that school would be 420, so 16 each year group. The PAN, the published admission number, is the number a school must admit if there is demand. So it's a kind of, it's a cap in terms of the number of children they must take.
My final question Chair is around homeschooling. This is something that I've been following throughout my sort of councillor career here and that number has been consistently increasing because sometimes we have issues with, in particular S E M D, children having to homeschool rather than go to the school that's actually allocated to them. It may not be your area where you can probably answer that, but the last time I heard it, that figure was nearly 900 or something, people who choose to homeschool. Some of them, some of it, you have to admit that is not out of choice, they've chosen to do it because that is the only option that they've got, they don't want their child to go to a school where they're clearly not going to fit in or they've got all sorts of reasons for it.
Councillor Marouf, that's not a question for John, but Meredith would like to come in on that one.
All right, sorry then, I started off with that saying, it might not be.
Sorry, so yes, I mean, there is an issue around elective home education, there are a number of reasons why people choose to electively home educate their child and indeed it's something which national government has been talking about as having a registered list. Within that, there are, there are some people who do that for a philosophical reason, but we do know nationally that there are some issues around children with particular needs who they struggle to stay in school or school is struggling to help them stay in school. We are acutely aware of that and we are working on that and that's part of the conversations that we're having with all of our schools about integrated resource hubs, about specialist hubs, which is a way of ensuring. So what we have seen as well is that increase in the number of children who are neurodiverse and also have social, emotional, mental health since Covid. We don't have enough special schools nor is it absolutely right that those children should always be in special schools. How do we ensure that those children can access the right provision within mainstream schools and more than happy for us to come back at a future committee meeting and to give you an update on that and a briefing on that?
Thanks Meredith, okay. Thank you. I've just got a couple of things on, oh, did you want to come in councillor Horner?
Sorry Chair, I was just looking at the proposed reductions in admissions and they're down as ongoing reductions, so I suspect this is a fairly obvious answer. But this is a general trend in all those schools, it's on page 42 in the pack. Because some of them are in the south east and I know one of them is Rainbow Four, John, I know quite well. Is that because there's an ongoing drop in numbers in these schools or?
Sorry, John, can you put your microphone up please?
Do apologise, they've seen the reduction coming, so on an annual basis, they can request a lower number. We've only ever got three years data effectively, so we only know children that are born in recent years that will become reception age children. So these numbers can go back up to the original number if forecasts suggest that that's the trajectory.
There it is.
So just as well, just to give some caveat around this as well, so we have been expecting to see a drop off of secondary numbers, pupil numbers, that we were plateauing. In fact, what we've seen over the last couple of months is that the numbers are remaining at the same level. So what we are working on is why that is and it's looking like that's predominantly migration into Sheffield, which is great for our view that this is a city of growth, but that could therefore have some implications for primary as well in the longer term that actually we're seeing growth again in that area. But we'll, as ever, keep you informed with that, but it's just to give you that caveat that nothing stays the same and at the moment, some of our figures and trends are certainly in secondary, seeing that we've got the numbers remaining the same even though we thought they were going to drop off.
Thank you. So just, I've got a couple of things, if that's okay. Oh, councillor Turpin.
Sorry, should have asked it before. I just wanted to ask about the six forms, the part of six forms and just slight concern about the geographical spread, that there isn't really anything in the east of the city whatsoever.
Sorry, that's not a question for Johnny either.
Oh, is it not?
No, so that would, Meredith would like to come back on that, thank you.
So we do have a college in the city, so part of the, part of the core delivery of post 16 is college provision. Sheffield College, there are some schools that still have a six form. I mean, I'm happy for us to bring a paper back at a future date, I mean, that's probably as far as I can go at the moment because that, the college has been the key provider of post 16 provision with some smaller six forms.
I think that would be a really good thing to bring to kids, we can get that on work programme actually, because in the east of the city, there is, children are having to travel because there is no, and it's been an ongoing issue way before you arrived Meredith, which we've had a lot of parents approaches about that, so I think that would be a good thing to bring forward.
Could we include post 16 special educational needs and disabilities within that because I think that's absolutely fundamentally fundamental and also is how we ensure that we have children in the right place in our special schools as well and then in our mainstream schools, all of it links together.
I think that'd be a great idea, is everybody all right with that? That's wonderful.
Yeah, just going to support that Chair, because obviously in the, in the south east, we've also had the problem recently of the tram problems which caused, you know, six form kids, particular problems getting to Sheffield College. So, you know, it's really a concern for us about lack of six form provision in the south east.
Yep, there it is.
So what we'll also do is we'll look at what, how children go outside of the city boundary as well, because again, I think that's really key both for children with S E M D but also post 16, that there are a range of options that children in different parts of the city have and we shouldn't negate that either.
I think this sounds like a fantastic piece of work that would actually help members to understand where our, I think we have a view of, you know, all children, and we are wanting to look at our children, young people being able to go to school within their community, but actually, young people like to go outside of their community as well. So I think if we can just map it so we can kind of see where our children and young people are travelling to and from, that would be really helpful. But if I could just come back to item number eight on agenda, that'd be great, just a couple of things for me. One which says distance, I get the bit that it's on a straight line, but what is the distance that's taken into account? Because that's not in the document and when families do only put one option, we have children travelling a fair distance to school. Also in here, I had brought some notes, but I've forgotten to bring them with me, it states somewhere that families can apply for a maximum of three places. That wording makes that really quite onerous, it's a maximum of three, it doesn't say that they should use their three. So I think if people were to think, well, it's a maximum of three, but I can just put one or two, I think we just need to be mindful of that. And I think, oh, and just one more thing, I think for, Meredith has suggested that for all members, that we have a really simple briefing paper so that all members, or a member briefing for all members of the council, not just the ones in this committee, so that we can really understand really clearly what our admissions policy is, so that then when we do get our letters for those 80 people that, 145 families that didn't get a school which they'd picked, it would be easier for us to respond because we'd be really clear. So yeah, just that, thank you.
Thank you. We have done that previously, so I'm more than happy to do that, either face to face or a briefing now. The distance element is the tiebreaker. So if there are 10 places left and 20 children in the category, they're allocated on distance, straight line measurement, so that distance can be anything, it's not set. What we are all trying to avoid, last year for example, there were some children that parents had put one preference and what we're left with then is the nearest available school. And there were some eye watering distances last year, eight, nine miles. Hand on heart, they were all because, or they could have been avoided. So that's what we try and avoid. This year, the furthest distance is four and a half miles, still not great, but obviously not as onerous as nine miles. So there is no set distance with regard to admissions. Some parents for example, will choose to send their children to schools a long way away. For example, all say it's Notre Dame, take from all over the city. So that's what distance means in terms of the policy. I see what you mean, when you've been doing this a long time, you can't see one for the trees, three is the minimum that parents can express, not maximum. So the change in that wording would be helpful. Some authorities offer six, even seven preferences, so three is the statutory minimum. So it'd be quite easy to change that wording from maximum to minimum.
Yeah, I can't remember where, I did write it down, it's a 1.7 or something, it says a maximum of three, so if we could look at that, that'd be great. Okay, has anybody got any more comments on the, no? Okay. So the recommendation for committee today is to approve the oversubscription criteria for community and voluntary controlled schools for 2025-26, including for external six forms, to the proposed admissions numbers for 2025-26 and the statutory primary and secondary coordinated admissions scheme for 2025-26 as set out in the report. Are we all in agreement?
Yep, that's agreed, thank you.
So we now go on to agenda item number nine, which is the 16 to 25 years accommodation framework contract, which is on page 103 of the agenda reports pack and presenting today are Isabel Fisher and Amy Budry. And as we mentioned before, there are a closed item on this agenda if anyone...
And as we mentioned before, there are closed items on this agenda if anyone wants to speak on Appendix B. Does anyone want to do that so far, or might that become relevant? Nope? Okay. If you want us to do that, we can do that. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you. So this item is about our supported accommodation commissioning for our care leavers and our children who are looked after aged sixteen to twenty-five. And the item is largely about process, so this is seeking authorisation for us to recommission the frameworks that we've got for our providers that provide the accommodation. It's a four-and-a-half-year arrangement that we're looking to commission, that will start in October of this year, at an approximate cost of thirty-three million. And it will be a tender which contains four lots for group living, supported tenancy, floating support, and some block contracting as well.
Oh, sorry, I need to press my button. I've got a couple of questions on this. Has anyone else got any questions on this report? Councillor Hayby?
I think my question's in regards to the consultation. This is on page one oh eight, says that seven young people were interviewed. Honestly, I don't think that's enough for our consultation to get accurate representation of the views of children.
Can I ask a question on that then? Because the Appendix B...
It's not Appendix B.
Is our team that linked in with our looked-after children and feeding, is that right? Or is it... Can you explain why that's the number of people that have been consulted?
So there were two main bits of consultation here, so there was some consultation work that the Bosley Influences workers undertook, and that was with a small number of young people that are already in our supported accommodation. And then we've also used feedback from Bright Spots as well, which is a survey of our looked-after children as well. So it is a small cohort, but obviously, we... Young people needed to be comfortable in speaking to the team about that, and therefore they were the young people that came forward to want to be involved in that consultation.
Thank you. Can we just also, sorry, on that one then, so that's the young people that wanted to come forward, but can you just give us a little bit more information about how many young people engage with Bright Spots? Because I know we get more than seven young people engaged in that as well. It's a significant number, isn't it, that link in?
So Bright Spots is an extensive survey of our care experience population. So we do two surveys, one for children in care and one that's aimed at children beyond care, so our care leaver population. We try and aim to get about thirty percent representation in those surveys of our care leaver population and children in care population. This year, I think we just achieved under about twenty percent. So we're talking about twenty percent of a thousand care leavers and twenty percent of looked-after children, so that's a significant amount of young people. I know that it's not specific about semi-supported accommodation, it does ask particularly the care leavers, a lot of... For a lot of information about what makes life good for them, about where they live in and what makes them safe. So that gives us a lot of indications about what informs our strategies moving forward, both for recommissioning services, but also about the services we provide directly ourselves.
Is that okay? Thank you. I've just got a comment and a little question. Having had the privilege of going to some, I think councillor Marouf, you've been to some, haven't you, and councillor Rouse gone out and visited some of our supported living accommodation and met with some of our young people, and I had the opportunity to meet some of our unaccompanied asylum seeker children in their supported living. And I would say the quality of it, I go on a feeling, so you get a feeling when you walk into a building, whether or not it feels like home or it feels like an institution. And I can honestly say it felt like a home. You can't identify the properties from the street, which is fantastic. And having spoken to some of the young people as well about their experiences and their ambitions for the future, and the kind of support that they were getting to go to college and all sorts of things, was just really, really good. But one of the questions that did come out of our visits was regarding the Ofsted framework and the fact that for some of our supported living providers are supporting young people into adulthood, and that the framework is really... That they're worried about having to fit in with was for looked-after children in residential, and it's a difference. So I'm just wondering, have we had much of that, where we've got existing providers of semi-independent, being concerned about the requests from Ofsted being the same framework as residential, and what impact that might have on their ratings or anything moving forward?
So just to give background so that people are aware, so a new Ofsted regulatory framework came in in October last year for sixteen-plus providers. So it's a new regime that these providers are now subject to. Inspections by Ofsted aren't starting formally until April, so I think it's fair to say that these providers are going on a journey, and they are interpreting the current guidance in various ways. And we won't really know until the inspections start what sort of feedback Ofsted will be giving to providers, and what providers... How providers can respond to the framework, and whether they feel that it is rigid and doesn't allow the flexibility that they've currently got or not. Some of our providers are concerned about how it will impact on their ability to support that transition into independence, as you say. But, you know, I think our role in that is supporting the providers to make sure that they are delivering services that are in line with the Ofsted framework, but also are flexible and agile and responsive enough to be able to support our young people in the way that supports the transition into adulthood.
Thank you. Like I said, the provision that I went to was fantastic. Has anyone else got any more questions or comments regarding this paper?
Okay.
No? So the recommendation for this is that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee agree the commission of the sixteen to twenty-five years supported accommodation surveys from external providers with an estimated cost of thirty-three point one million pound over a period of four and a half years as set out in the report. Are we all in agreement?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So now we've got agenda item number ten, which is on page one four one, and this is the proposed capital programme for 2024-25. And we've got Matt and Amy who are presenting, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. We're covering in place of Mark Shake, who's attending school forum at the moment. So just briefly, the report provided to committee is linked to the council's overarching capital strategy and covers potential capital investment across four areas. So these are school condition, basic need, high-needs capital, and children looked after. The report kind of outlines the potential priorities and projects over the next five years. It also touches on the kind of longer-term challenges in this space. The detail of activity and schemes we brought through the capital process and through Finance Committee, and there's also the briefing from the Capital and Growth Programme Group into the trio. So I'll pause there for any questions or comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Councillor Marouf?
Thank you, Chair. I know we're doing the best we possibly can, but the condition of buildings and the amount of money that we've actually got, clearly there's a huge discrepancy there, and there's no way we can be maintaining them as well as we should be maintaining them. What is the criteria of actually maintaining buildings? Is it just complete health and safety issues? Because all we're doing at the moment is, we know the number is high, the amount of repairs needed is fairly high, but we don't have the funding. And as buildings deteriorate even further, that number will keep changing as we move forward. And I'm assuming there will be a strategy for this, but it's very much dependent on how much money we get in. And we get a lot of schools with lots of difficult situations. So I'm just trying to understand that, what we actually do to keep schools functional.
So just as a brief response on that, and I think I'll be one for Mark to kind of fall for more detail in terms of that, but briefly, we have a kind of agile project around school condition in terms of the position we're in. The allocation is around three million. In the report, there's around forty-seven million worth of work that needs doing, and that's the high priority stuff. I think the overall bill is in the region of a hundred million. So that is a huge, you know, challenge to manage. What the team do is obviously focus on priorities, you know, ensuring that we do the key works that are needed. That is an agile programme of work, but, you know, you can see from those figures yourself that there is a very significant funding challenge in school condition that we are working to manage.
Councillor Hayby?
Let me know if it's the wrong person or place to ask, but on the proposal C, the SEN sufficiency, I saw a statistic over the last few years, ninety-six percent of parents who went to tribunal were granted in favour. And what would happen is section one of the EHCPs, they would then put a special school in place, which tends to overwhelm, which I feel like will overwhelm section C. Has that been taken into consideration? That's the national guideline, I don't know about Sheffield if it's the same thing.
So you're asking a really difficult question to answer, because actually you're hitting the nub that this is a real system issue. So at the moment, a number of our special schools are over capacity by quite a lot. So we're talking about twenty, thirty percent, some of our special schools are over capacity. Some of our special schools have really good, modern buildings. We have a number of our special schools where actually the building is not fit for purpose for the overcapacity that we have. So we are looking at how we address that and what we do. But you're absolutely right that one of the key issues for that overcapacity in our special schools is tribunals and finding in favour of parents. And it is really difficult, isn't it? Because if we don't challenge, then actually we know that some children... You know, parents would say, well, of course I'd say this, but we are of the opinion, and some of the professionals in special schools are of the opinion that those children could actually have their needs met in mainstream schools. And we potentially have some children within mainstream schools who should be in special schools, and we don't have the right capacity. And you're quite right that at the moment nationally, and it is the same for us, that tribunals find in favour of parents ninety-eight percent of the time. So there is a tortuous conversation that we have with ourselves of, actually, is it worth putting money into the legal costs of tribunal? But at the same time, if we don't do that, then for our special schools, and I've visited three in the last three weeks, one in particular sticks out, where they have no more capacity in their school. And yet tribunal will still find in favour of parents for that school, and the head teacher and the chair of governors are of the view that now... And I think the tribunal judge has said to that school that good enough education is enough, and that's why they're still finding in favour. So we're in a real tricky situation, and we need to bring back to you as committee what we are looking to do as a system around that, but also how we perhaps help influence the national policymaking about what is happening around SEN. And some of it, a simple answer is more money, that's not the absolute answer. A lot of it is about how we look at preventing escalation of need and actually putting in support at the earliest stage, and all of our schools being a place where children belong, rather than escalation of need.
Okay. Yep, councillor Horner?
Just very quickly, Chair, a word of praise for our buildings team, because I raised a question about a problem at Beighton Nursery and Infant School, because I'd seen it on Facebook, that was closed on a particular day. I got a detailed response in two hours, which was very clear that the office knew exactly what the problems were, the whole problems of the building, and what they proposed to do about it and the various capital questions. So I was really impressed that everybody was on top of their game. I got a detailed and helpful answer.
Thank you, councillor Horner. Councillor Marouf?
Sorry to labour the point, but going back to the building condition one, I think I missed a little part of your answer. You're saying the backlog is forty-five million, and we only have three million that we can actually spend, which works out about forty thousand per school, which is phenomenally low a figure, isn't it? So what happens if there's a major crisis with one of the schools, which it can be? I mean, RAC has been one of them recently. Do we then bring the budget from somewhere else into this area?
It probably won't pass to you, Meredith.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, that is part of the decision-making, so there is a finite amount of money, isn't there? It's been that we have set, so it is about moving things around and people making really difficult decisions. As I say, I've been out now to three of our special schools, and most of those schools have a deficit budget. And one of the questions asked me was, do we need to actually make some changes which are about ensuring safety? And it's absolutely, you need to make the decisions that ensure safety, and that's what we're looking at the whole time, it's how we ensure safety, rather than the things that would maintain a building for longer, such as changing the windows, such as, you know, it's probably at the point now where it is about making sure the boilers are up to date and triaging that on a regular basis. And that becomes harder, doesn't it? When you know that the buildings are in more disrepair, so actually the likelihood of something becoming an issue is greater the whole time that we're not, we don't have the funding. And it's not the council haven't decided that we have the funding, it's just that prioritisation that needs to happen all the time.
Councillor Turpin?
Thank you. Thanks for answering this question so far, and thanks to members for asking the question. So I was just thinking, what is the plan then? You know, are we just waiting for those schools to be academised? Or are we waiting for a new government? Or is there a plan to tackle it? You know, is there a plan to borrow that funding? Or, you know, what is the plan?
So I think, so the plan is that we need to continue to make sure that we are maintaining schools as they are, that's a politician's answer. We need to make sure that... So what we don't know is what's going to happen over the next year, do we? And we don't know what the decisions of any of the political groups are about funding that comes down. I think that there is a key conversation about, and it's not just schools, is it? It's about a range of our different buildings, our public buildings, and how we need to make sure that they're maintained. And some of them are fantastic. So, you know, you go to Discovery, it's a beautiful building, it is a really beautiful building. So it's not that we haven't done things which make sure that we've got great buildings, but we also have a proportion of our buildings where, you know, that we need something radical. So Morf Cross... Have I got the right name?
Mossbrook.
But is that the right name of the school?
Mossbrook.
I do make names up of lots of different things. Mossbrook. We went out, and it is a fifties building. It is a typical fifties building with lots of smallish rooms. The level of need which that school is meeting now is very complex. Some of the, you know, some of the building means that it's really difficult for the school to maintain. It was on the list for a new school, it didn't meet the DFE threshold. So how do we make sure that it is absolutely a school that's fit for purpose for our children within a reduced... And, you know, the decisions about loans, et cetera, I mean, I think those are really difficult decisions to make in the current financial climate of any local authority at present.
If I can just, coming on that, I think it was a DFE decision not to, you know, fund that school, but we have got, we do put in to government to rebuild our schools, and we've got a rebuilding programme in Sheffield, for is it five or six new primaries? Six new primaries, which will be coming, and we will continue to do that. But what I would say is, I've also been into academies, we've got new buildings whose roofs are leaking. So, you know, it's not necessarily an issue around old, maintained buildings that are maintained by the council, it's a buildings issue, and it could be across the board, really. And I would like to just go back to the RAC issue. Obviously, we had to sort the roof out at Abbey Lane, which we did, and we made that decision. had to put, sort the roof out at Abbey Lane, which we did, and we, we just made that decision based on safety and health and safety, so that we could protect the children and staff that work in that school. And that cost us over half a million pound, which came from that three point four million. So that would have came off from somewhere else. But what I would like to say is we have now, I did write at Secretary of State about that, and the, our application for reimbursement is being considered. So although we've not been told, yes, we will get that money back, we are on the list to be reconsidered. So we're a little bit baby step nearer to actually hopefully being able to bring that money back in, so that then we can continue to do some of the work in our other schools, where we've got buckets in corridors and, you know, things propping up buildings and kids in jumpers. And although I have been some fabulous schools, and even though they've got, might have got some buckets in corridors, they still do some amazing work with our children and young people, despite all of that, whether they're an academy or a maintained school. So is there any other questions on this item?
No.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to clarify in terms of, obviously, not that you can't ask the questions that you've been asking and things, but just to be clear, the allocation of the capital budget, the capital programme is a matter for Finance Committee. What this paper is doing is asking you to confirm that these are your policy or strategy priorities, so that when officers are putting proposals forward to Finance Committee, they're not putting forward proposals that are inconsistent with your strategy priorities, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Sarah. So on that, I don't know whether I'm allowed to say anything, but I'm going to say it anyway. I'm absolutely in support of all these, and particularly in support of the children's social care element of this, because we are, you know, in a position, as most councils across the country, where children's costs for social care are, are could be the breaking point of any council. And we do spend a lot sending our children and young people into a provision which is really expensive, and because, you know, our children and young people need looking after. However, we do have a ten year strategy when it comes to our sufficiency for children's social care. Looking at Sally to make sure I get this right. And as part of that, it will look at how we bring in house some of our own social care services, so how we look for properties and how we develop that. So I think that's a big ask, and something that I would hope that most people, I know councillor Marouf and I sometimes are quite flabbergasted with the amount that we, that we have to spend on our children and young people. However, we will spend that money because our children and people need looking after, and that is our absolute priority. But in the long term, we are looking at bringing some of those services back in house, and that will mean some capital investment. So I hope that everyone would also agree with that. Thank you very much. So, thanks for prompting that, Sarah. So, recommendations then is, this committee's have been asked to endorse the proposals set out in the report, and note that the proposals will now be included in the draft capital strategy to be submitted to full council for approval in March 2024. And if approved, officers will work with members to consult with relevant stakeholders, including the partners, staff, trade unions, if required, and in respect of equalities and climate change on the proposals in this report to inform final project proposals. B, officers will work to develop any necessary detailed implementation plans for the proposals in this report, so that the proposals can be implemented as planned, and approval for detailed proposals will be sought as part of the monthly capital approval cycle by the Finance Committee. Are we all in approval?
Thank you, that's approved. Thank you. Okay, so now we've got agenda item number eleven, which is the Education, Children and Families Committee Climate Statement, which is on page one seven three of your agenda reports pack. And, oh, Meredith.
Okay, so this paper is giving the opportunity for committee to comment on the proposals put forward by the Service Directors for Children's Services around what our key areas are to address climate change. It has gone through the relevant committee and came back out to make sure that as a committee, you were happy with that, whether you had any additional proposals to add in, whether there was anything else that you thought that we as officers should be progressing. So really, it's an opportunity for you to comment on what's being suggested, and whether there is anything else that we could be doing within our area of children's services.
Thank you, Meredith. I'm hoping everyone's had a chance to look at this document, and whether or not you've got anything you'd like to add, feed in, amend, or if you've got any suggestions or proposals for officers? No? Okay. So the recommendation on this item is, on the back of this decision taken by the Strategy and Resource Policy Committee at its meeting held on the thirteenth of December 2023, the committee is recommended to consider, and if not previously agreed, agree with or without amendments their respective statement to ensure that the proposed actions contained in such statement are reflected in their work programme. That was a very legal way of saying it, wasn't it, really? Who wrote that? Okay. Are we all all right? Did everybody understand that recommendation as I was reading it out? Are we all all right with that? Do we all agree? That's agreed. Thank you. So then we're on to agenda item number twelve, which is on page one eight seven of your reports pack, and it will be presented by Matt Piers and Joe Horraby. And this is on the childcare reform spring budget 2023. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start, and then Matt will be much better at the detail of some of this, I'm sure. This is quite a lengthy report and quite, quite complex, so I shall endeavour to start us off fairly simply, and then we can get into the detail as, as people want. So the purpose of the report is to provide you with an overview of the childcare reforms that were announced in the spring of last year, in the spring budget, and to seek approval for the local authority's next steps in delivering those childcare reforms, and to seek delegations for agreement to proceed to develop delivery plans in accordance with the Department for Education's guidance, and to implement them. So, just a quick bit about childcare and where the childcare reforms have come from. The provision of good quality childcare is fundamental and provides a raft of social and economic benefits to families and to our children and young people in particular, and it's essential for the current and the future economy of our city. Really, this is about ensuring that children get the best start in life. Research by the New Economic Foundation found that investing in children in their earliest years is one of the highest returning investments that a government can make. So this announcement last year in the spring budget really was focused on increasing productivity, employment, and enabling families to work, with the benefits that that has, both economic and for outcomes for children and young people. They, the reforms that were announced include a range of measures, and there are two central parts to this. Extended entitlement, and I'll come and I'll talk a bit more about what that means in a moment, and wraparound care. But as I said, the main, the main intention of both of these strands is to improve our economic performance and productivity. So the idea is that more parents and carers will be able to access work and return to the labour market after having children. The childcare reforms are being introduced in phases, which are set out in the report, with, with the extended entitlement coming into effect, the first changes starting in April this year, and the wraparound care beginning to roll out from September 2024. So I will just give you the context of this is that the new, these new reforms should be considered alongside the fact that the local authority already has a statutory duty under section six of the Childcare Act 2006 to ensure that there is sufficient childcare for working parents and parents and carers who are studying or training for employment. So this is an additional ask on top of that existing statutory duty. So I'll talk briefly a little bit about extended entitlement, and then I will cover wraparound care, and just highlight some of the, the challenges that we are working through. So the extended entitlement, the current position is that families are entitled to thirty hours of funded childcare per week for three and four year olds for thirty eight weeks of the year. And in addition, some children, some two year olds are entitled to up to fifteen hours. That's usually based on specific criteria, and it's generally some of the more vulnerable children or families, children from families on up lower income. So that's the current offer. The extended entitlement will introduce, will introduce thirty hours of funded childcare for children over the age of nine months. So that funded entitlement will start from nine months instead of two or usually three years old. Children will be eligible for that, the term after they turn nine months. And the eligibility for that, so qualifying families, will be in England where each parent or carer's earnings are under one hundred thousand per year, and at least a hundred and sixty seven pounds per week, which is equal to sixteen hours at national minimum or living wage. So this is about, you know, significantly increasing the offer of childcare, funded childcare for children down to the age of nine months where parents are working. And as I said earlier, the rollout of that is in three phases, starting in April this year and through to September 2025, and that's set out in more detail in the report. The, the wraparound part of the, of the childcare reforms is about expanding the provision of before and after school care for all children, so that all children in the city of primary school age, so that's reception up to year six inclusive, should be able to access wraparound care between eight AM and six PM, Monday to Friday, in term time. And the rollout of that begins in September this year. The aim of that is that that childcare should be self-financing and sustainable by September 2026. There is a revenue grant in the very short term to support that, the development of that provision. It's really important to note that parents and carers will be expected to pay for that wraparound care with the support of existing government subsidies, so tax-free childcare and childcare element of universal credit. So those are the two sort of key strands of, of the childcare reforms. I'm not going to go into much more detail, but just wanted to highlight some of the challenges for us in implementing this. These are challenges that are not specific to Sheffield. These are challenges that our peers and colleagues across the country are, are working to overcome. We're working closely with other authorities to share practice here. One of our challenges is the forecasting methodology. So what's difficult for us to ascertain is how, what the demand will be for the take-up of these places. Some of the demand will be conversion, if you like, where people are already accessing and paying for childcare, but will now be able to receive that as, as funded childcare. However, it's very difficult for us to, to make that assessment. We're doing some, a lot of work with our performance and analysis team, and we are sort of homing in on, on what we think that demand is likely to be, but it is going to take us some time to finesse that. The, we also have the administration of the grants and funding. So there are four chunks of funding coming in, a mixture of capital and revenue. Some of that is for us as a local authority to cover our costs in responding to this new duty. Some of it is for allocation out to providers for the provision of the free entitlement, the extended entitlement. Some of it is revenue and capital support for the development of new childcare wraparound. That's set out in the financial implications section in, in more detail. And finally, I just wanted to mention that another of our key challenges is workforce and the sustainability of childcare provision. So actually, you know, we know that we already have challenges in, in ensuring that we have sufficient qualified, quality workforce in the early years sector. This, this rapid expansion potentially will pose some real challenges. And furthermore, the childcare element and the sustainability of the provision provides us with another challenge, or rather, the sector with another challenge. We know that for many providers, the current grant for the free entitlement is really barely enough to cover costs. So, and they have often been reliant therefore on, on the fees for paid wraparound care. So we know that there will be some real challenges, and we will work very closely with the sector. We've got good relationships with providers, and we will work very closely with the sector to try and mitigate the risks for, for them. I'm going to stop there, and we can take questions, or Matt can add anything I've missed.
I'll take people's names down. For councillor Turpin, anybody else? I'll just, councillor Hurst. I just want, there's are so many questions about this one, and Joe, you have done your best there to, to answer most of the questions that I've written down. But this is, this is, it does feel like a little bit, little bit too late, if you get, too little too late, if you get on my drift. The whole issue of this is it feels like it's been really, really kind of speedily rolled out, not really well thought through. And my worry is about capacity. You know, we've had lots of conversations in the sector, lots of nurseries have closed, lots of nurseries that are open have closed their baby rooms, because they were, you know, they needed space for two year olds, FEL and three and four year olds. So one, we don't have the rooms for the babies, neither do we have the skill set, because staff have been used to working with two years and older. So then to be have to ask them to look after babies from nine months, I am sure that staff are really well prepared for this. I don't want to underestimate their skills, but actually, this would, in some nurseries, would be a new, a new area of work for people. And I do know that people that do work in early years are more than capable of doing that, but it's, it's a big ask at such a short leading time. I think my, my worry also is for the expectations for parents. If parents have been told that they are entitled to paid for childcare, and they go to a nursery and there is no capacity, then how are we going to manage that? How are we going to manage? I remember when we used to do the golden tickets for FEL, and, and families would just turn up at a nursery with a golden ticket and be like, I want a nursery place. Well, they're in a place at this nursery. And I'm just wondering, how are we going to manage the expectations of families when it comes to them wanting a place? Will they want a place near where they live, or will they want a place at nursery near where they work? You know, which will be more convenient for them? So I understand that that must be a thing around sufficiency and whereabouts in the city. We need these spaces. I'm worried about the impact on those that are in receipt of the FEL. So will they no longer take priority over the paid, the people that are working in places that are funded? And who's going to pay for the childcare for the other twelve weeks a year? So if they're only funded for thirty eight weeks, for the other thirteen weeks, maths, you're sick, I need to get on a maths workshop. So the other fourteen weeks a year, who will then pay for those families' childcare? I know that sometimes it can spread the hours out over the year rather than it being weekly. So that's one point for me. And, and another thing around the wrapper, so that's the early years bit, and the, the paid for childcare for, for children in early years. But the wraparound bit for me is also, I'm worried about, I know we have been having conversations, again, we've I'm worried about, I know we have been having conversations again with schools, some schools are really worried about this, when are they going to do their maintenance if they're open from eight till six? What staff are they, are going to be running the wraparound? You know, we've got teachers who already work exceedingly long hours doing things outside of their paid-for time, doing planning and prep for class and, and all of the other things that they do, you know, their safeguarding element of things. Are we now asking teachers to also be part of that wraparound care? Or are we working with other sectors around upskilling parents to become play workers and put that sort of thing into schools? So I think, I've got, I've got an endless list, Jo, you know, I've, I've, this is a thing that really kind of worries me, that it's a big headline, that it's all going to be provided for people, and then actually we've kind of been left to sort it out, you know, this is, the money's coming down and just get on with it kind of thing, and, you know, the lack of investment in this area for such a long time has meant that this is going to be really quite difficult. So I don't know if you can answer any of them, or if I've just had a bit of a rant. That's it all, I'm really sorry. But yeah, it's the capacity, it's managing expectations for parents, is the impact on the fell children and whether or not they will no longer take priority over paid-for spaces for working people because it's longer hours. What are we going to do for the fourteen hours, fourteen weeks a year? Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, there is a lot, a lot to unpack there and, and there aren't easy answers to this. I will, I'll say a little bit and, and see if Matt wants to, to add in, but in terms of the impact on children just, just accessing the fell places of the thirty hours, not, not at full days, that I think is something that we are trying to ascertain and understand from providers. I don't know whether there is anything that's come from government in terms of guidance on that, but Matt, Matt, I'm sure will know if there is. The fourteen weeks holidays, you're right, that has traditionally been something that a lot of providers spread, spread the cost of over, over the rest of, of the year. Again, I'm not sure if we've got guidance on that, but yeah, again, Matt will probably pick that up. And the challenge for schools in terms of the wraparound is again, really significant and the anxiety about what the cost of this will be for schools and how sustainable it will be is a real challenge. I think one of the, one of the challenges we've set ourselves is to try to work with the sector, not just the school sector, not just the, the private voluntary independent sector, but also the play sector. We're talking, working with colleagues in youth services as well about actually how, if we package this together and we think as a sort of whole system, can we, how can we box clever to create employment pathways for people in the play, in the early years and play sector? Because actually if you start to add up before school and after school and some holiday play and some, some playwork, how might we start to create, you know, viable career pathways in areas which have historically tended not to provide full-time work? So there is a real challenge for us to turn this into something which benefits our economy in an inclusive way and which stimulates inclusive growth, but it is no small challenge. I'm gonna see if Matt's got any more detailed answers.
Thanks, Jo, just, just to, I guess just to add to that, so we're doing a lot of work with the sector at the moment in terms of understanding some of the detail further so. There's been a number of workshops, we're in the process of surveying them further in terms of understanding their capacity and the risks and the issues which we've, we've touched upon. In terms of the fourteen weeks, I've just messaged actually a person in the team, just try and get the information on that, so I'll come back around to that, hopefully necessary back to talking. And then in terms of the kind of, how we try and kind of work, work this through with the, with the sector, I think, you know, it's important that we continue to utilise the forms that we've got. In terms of the sufficiency position around extended entitlement, you know, we are, as we've touched on the paper from this April, it's looking kind of okay, it's from September onwards, we're anticipating more issues, so we're working through with capacity and what that looks like. And again, without going into all the detail, what we're trying to do is model kind of three different scenarios around take-up and then, you know, go for a reasonable position in there, but it is, you know, working in a, a new, a new space. I was going to say at the start, I think one of the things that we're very mindful as the team is there is a lot in this space, so just in terms of how we work of ourselves as members, we'll be doing a, a monthly update, a trial, but we also think workshop would be, would be, you know, good to do in this space, it might be need more than one workshop given the, given the amount of stuff we've got to talk about here. But that's, that's kind of where we're at, but in terms of the, just going back to the sufficiency position, as I say, it's kind of from September onwards where we're, we're really focusing in on. And it is that challenge around take-up in terms of how families will, you know, react to these places and how they'll take up or not, that we're just trying to model at the moment.
Thanks, Matt, I think, and most members would welcome regular updates on this because we will probably be approached by parents and families that have got expectations around this, so councillor Turpin.
Thanks very much, Bill. Right, where was it? So I think my daughter, who's ten now, was at nursery when the changes first came in, and I remember seeing the difference because in, in order to make it work financially, and, and it was a really nice nursery, and it was still a nice nursery, but they went from something like a maximum of twenty quid, quid, twenty kids in the room to up to thirty kids and you had to like start paying for your stacks and your dinner, and that was how they changed their business model to carry on, but it was still a good service. But, you know, the chaos from thirty kids in a room is greater than the chaos from twenty kids in a room. So I wondered about the impact on the services being delivered, if that's clear to you or? And the other thing, and, and you mentioned it actually, I was going to ask you about the weird quirky way that things like education are funded, you know, it seems so alien, you would expect that here's a hundred widgets, here's the money for a hundred widgets, you know, we've got a hundred kids, here's the money for a hundred kids, where it's more like, you'll probably have about a hundred kids, so here's the money for them, or maybe here's the money for ninety, you know. So I wonder if that is corrected, you know, if they give us, just to use the obtuse example, money for a hundred kids and there's a hundred and twenty kids, or, or fewer even, you know, is that corrected down the line? And finally, why does Sheffield have a lower funding rate than the national average?
Okay, so first of all, the, you're right that o- over the years, providers have had to be quite creative and inventive in order to balance their books and things like charging for snacks, et cetera, has, has been one of, one of the areas that they've, they've done that. The, there are rules, quite strict rules, under Ofsted, about the space per child, and there are different, differing amounts of space depending on the age of the child. So babies actually requiring a greater floor space than older children, for example. So that, that should mean that we don't have thirty children squeezed into a, into a room that is only big enough according to Ofsted for twenty. However, as you say, you know, providers will have to maximise the space. There are, I think this is coming in, that, that providers will be able to have a slightly higher ratio, higher number of childrens, children to adults, but of course only if they've got the floor space to match, and that, that's a, this is a volume business and there's a tipping point to make that viable. So it's, that's not everything, you know, that it, that it might look on the surface. In terms of the funding, the funding for funded early learning follows the child, so the, you know, we, we process all of those claims and pay per child to each nursery, so that's, it works differently from, from schools, it is a different process. This does mean, these changes mean that we will have to run several processes alongside one another in order to service the childcare and the early learning element, and that is an additional burden which we're trying to minimise as much as possible for care providers, but we will have to account for the two grants separately as we understand it. In terms of the lower rate, I'm gonna...
It's Mark's question.
Yeah, I will have to check with, with colleagues that work in the finance element of this, so Mark would normally be here, but he is at the schools forum where they're no doubt talking about some of this exact matter. So I will take that question back and provide, provide you with a written answer.
Are you, you know, worried in the report?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hurst.
I do apologise, it worked earlier when I said my name, and so I should have, I should have just have pulled and said and not looked in, I'm sure, I'm sure he's, he's probably snuck under the desk and did something.
I'll pay close attention in future.
Yeah. So I can't outdo you, Dawn, on your rant because I, I am really, but I'm really concerned about this. It's got, it's such a lot of change to bring out at a really fast pace when we know that the sector has been really badly hit over the last couple of years and we simply don't have the capacity. And I'm, I'm worried, I think, about us being overwhelmed by this because there, there are very unreal expectations how these services are advertised, and it, and it really does give rise to massive concerns for me because at the end of the day, we've, we've coped as, as ward councillors with provision shrinking and businesses not being able to cope with the underfunding of places and for it to have it explode, it's something that we can't, you can't rely on people saying, okay, right, I'm gonna take out a loan, I'm going to expand my business, I'm going to create this capacity, and are we going, are we going to be able to cope with this, I think is my question, given all my concerns, and, and I have every faith, but I just do need to ask the question.
Thank you, Diane.
I think that we are in a, in a reasonable position, certainly as Matt said, to start building up and to respond to initial demand that we anticipate. And that's based on, as Matt said, you know, modelling a number of scenarios from very, you know, sort of conservative estimates to, to, to more relaxed estimates. And, and so our current work with the sector suggests that we will be able to meet demand in, in the initial phases. The challenge will be as, as expectation grows and word spreads and whether the provision can, and the supply side can keep, keep up with demand. That said, this is uncharted territory really, we haven't been in this space for a very long time, and I think everyone nationally is, is watching very closely, and I suspect that, that civil servants are biting their nails just as much at Whitehall as we are here in Sheffield, because this, this is quite a high-risk move, and it, as you say, it does raise expectations. We are working really closely with our colleagues in family hubs to make sure that we have got good information, good communication and engagement channels for parents and carers and communities, and that we are building those relationships at, at, you know, locally so that we can share intelligence about availability of places, about demands, whether it's met or unmet, and we are going to be spending some of that revenue grant on, on increasing capacity in our family hub provision to support parents and communities and providers and to provide that, that capacity really to join the dots and share intelligence. So I think we're doing everything we can to mitigate the risk, but I can't, I can't sit here and, and say hand on heart that there, there are no, no challenges and no risks for us to mitigate. Is that fair to say, Matt?
Thank you, thanks. Councillor McGowan.
Thank you, I don't know if I should have declared an interest that I'm a trustee on a preschool beforehand, I don't know if I should have said that, and I apologise, should I?
Can we note it now then?
We can note it for a minute.
Please, sorry.
No, it's fine, we can note it for a minute, so I suspect it's not something that, or it isn't something that prevents Cass McGowan entering into the discussion, she's not more directly impacted than, than anybody else.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree with what everybody else has said about this. The thing that struck me, I mean, where I'm a trustee, the, you know, it's about the restriction of the building which you've already mentioned, I can't, you know, they've already got a waiting list for future years, they've got people putting their names down before the child's been born. I don't know where they're gonna get, you know, the cluster's outstanding and to keep that outstanding and quality, and I don't know where, you can't, unless you're gonna build, so to me this is gonna have to be new establishments being, being set up in some, in a lot of cases. But the one thing that struck me was what you said about career paths, and I thought, is there, you know, some area that we can build in apprenticeships in this area? I don't know if that's what you were thinking about or, or not, but I think it'd be a really good opportunity for the council to look at its own apprenticeships in this area, so that was the thing I wanted to ask, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so we are working closely with, and actually the member officers, fellow officers, are members of the, of the programme board for this, for the work around this, from, so colleagues in, in City Futures who are looking at this from a, from a growth perspective, from a skills perspective, and so, yes, absolutely, thinking about all the ways in which we can, you know, snatch, snatch some victories from the jaws of, of this challenge. So yes, that includes looking at things like apprenticeships, looking at, at things like the apprenticeship levy, working with some of, you know, potentially with some of our bigger employers in the city as well. So yes, we are looking at, at all of that. It is, yeah, it's a huge challenge, but you're absolutely right, it is a city, it's a city challenge really, yeah, and the point about physical capacity is a, is a good one, the capital grant is not an, an amount that enables us to do, you know, a neighbourhood nurseries initiative of old unfortunately, when we built quite a lot of new provision and Sure Start, yep. However, yeah, we will be looking, we'll be working with any provider that wants to, to develop their provision to see how we can support.
Thank you. Councillor Haby.
Sure, I collect my thoughts. Thank you for bringing this. I think the common theme is it could go horribly wrong or it could go amazingly well for the, for the whole wider economy, and I think we wouldn't know if it'd be a net positive or a net negative unless we have that data. But that being said, will it pay off before it crumbles or will it not? And I don't think we could ever know exactly if that would happen unless we keep watching it and keeping a close eye on it. That being said, I feel like us as a committee, we need to have more of a close eye for Sheffield and wait for, I think it's at Whitehall, to send out statistics and data because their benefits nationally, but Sheffield, like we've mentioned, and the nursery Karen mentioned, could get overwhelmed, but I just started commenting that quickly. We wouldn't, we wouldn't know unless we watch it.
Well, we probably, probably would know more if it had been better thought out before it got put into, into community, into local government, so we would have probably been on a bit better foundation, but that's just my point of view, my point of view on that one. Thanks councillor Haby. Did you want to come back on anything then?
Yeah, just, you're, you're right, and the, the, the funding to date that has been announced to support the, the viability and the start-up of, of new childcare is, is only for a couple of years. There is an expectation that we keep being reminded of that everything will be sustainable and viable by then, or it won't be because there isn't the demand, and I think, you know... And I think, you know, that, that is, that is quite a challenging message for us to manage with, with the sector. Because there aren't guarantees, um, as you, as you've rightly said. So, um, yeah, it is a matter of us continually refining our, our data and our forecasting, building trust with, with the sector, which actually is, is good. We, we have good relationships with the sector. But continuing to build on, on that and to find ways to better understand parents' intentions as well and carers' intentions and needs. Matt might want to add something.
Just, just to add in terms of um how we're trying to manage some of the risk in the space. So we have a fortnightly group that's in place and chaired by Andrew Jones, institutional education. Um, and we'll be using that to, you know, drive the activity forward. I think in terms of the places and the data, I think one of the things I'd add is it's important that we kind of triangulate what we've got. So we don't rely solely on what our data forecast says. You know, we talk and work with the sector and use that to triangulate. So that's what the data is saying, lots of people on the ground are saying, this is what parents are saying to try and get us into that. This is the position we need to work on. Um, just in terms of your query at the start, Dawn, around the 38 weeks. So for the extended entitlement, that can be stretched over the year. Um, for, for wraparound, that's term time only. So just, just to clarify that point. Um, but, you know, I think the points everyone's raising are, you know, really helpful and important ones. Um, but that's how we'll be trying to, you know, manage this space.
Thank you councillor Haby. I think it would be good for us to get this on our work programme so that we do get a regular update on the proceed, on the state of, of where we're at with that. Is that all right?
I just wanna add something, I might be thinking too far ahead. Um, but say it doesn't work out and you've planned to train all these, you know, young students, apprenticeships for a nursery. There's also, I think, a decrease in how many people want to become teachers. So maybe to mitigate it, it's a course that allows them to progress into teachers rather than just specifically nursery. And I think that way we can mitigate the risk if it doesn't work, you just don't have a bunch of students who can't work in nurseries anymore.
I think on that, sorry, Jo, I think we need to value early years and that's the issue. So we've got, and this is a historic issue of, I'd say, the last 10 years where the, we undervalue people that work in early years. So what we've seen is people become very highly qualified in early year settings. So um they do a lot of work around becoming SENCOs and all sorts. The, the, the amount of time that they put in and the training that they do is really undervalued. But then what's happened is we don't pay them enough. So they go and work at Lidl and they go and work at Aldi because they actually get paid more. So then why would you wanna stay and then even consider then investing more into further training, which is gonna get you into further debt to then not necessarily be guaranteed a position? I think it's a, it, a serious conversation that we do need to have about progression with regards to where people wanna learn and where people wanna work. I hope we can keep people in early years. I hope, I hope that this does work and I hope that this, it becomes really successful and that people do feel valued when they work in early years. What I don't wanna do is have that drop off, that cliff edge. But what then, what we don't wanna do is then think, oh, well, actually, I think I wanna go and work somewhere else. And we'll have to keep, you know, because we do struggle with retention. Um, so I think there is a big push for us to start valuing the people that work with our children in early years for definite. Thank you. Um, councillor Horner.
Yes, Jo, yes, Jo, I don't expect obviously to respond to this because it's largely a political point I'm gonna make. I think this policy is, is driven by government's desire to get parents into work rather than anything else. Um, and I think it entirely misses the whole point. Everybody in this discussion has talked about how we keep the quality and all the rest of it. You just talked, quite rightly said about the importance of early years. It's got nothing to do with that. It's got to do with the fact that government wants to stop paying people for staying at home as it sees it. Um, and, and that, and that worries me because these are such important, I mean, any years uh, uh, of a child's life are important, but these early years are really, really important. And, and this, this it seems to me just says, well, we need to provide X thousand places without any question as to how good that plan. I mean, the point councillor Turpin started with, you know, when you, if you expand the size of the groups, uh, the mayhem of 30 little children. Um, I can remember babysitting two little children and that was enough mayhem for me. Um, so I just think this is a, you know, this is not thought through, as others have said. Um, and I do worry that this may indeed fail. Um, and that we, as a country, we will fail a, a, a group of children. We've seen the effect of Covid on children. We're creating a similar effect if we're not careful, if we set up a, a system that doesn't work. And children, and, and children are just placed in places that where they get nothing out of it, when they could have had perhaps quality time with their parents if they were lucky enough to do so. And, and, and that worries me.
Thank you councillor Horner. I think many of us in this room would echo your thoughts on that. And we did have a really good system in place, if you all recall, the Show Start programme, which was very well thought through. Did some fantastic legacy where our children that came through Show Start programme initially in my area had the highest SATS results ever and they were our Show Start babies. And, you know, and, and the, the timeline itself speaks volumes. You've got two years, at least the Show Start programme was a 10-year programme with a plan at the end to mainstream. So, you know, it, it, we all know what's going on here, don't we? But thank you for, for bringing that up councillor Horner. So the recommendations, anybody else got any more comments or questions on this item? Now, I knew this work could be a hot topic. Um, so on this, there are quite a few recommendations on this one, so please bear with me. So, uh, members are requested to note the contents of this report regarding childcare provision and the childcare reforms announced in the spring budget 2023. Approve the council's proceeding to develop the Extended Entitlement Delivery Plan and the Wraparound Delivery Plan as set out in the report. To extend that, to the extent that they require decisions not covered by existing officer delegations, delegate authority to the Strategic Director of Children's Services to A, agree and implement the Extended Entitlement Delivery Plan as set out in section 2.4 and 4 of this report. Agree and implement the Wraparound Delivery Plan, subject to the Department of Education's approval, as set out in section 3.4 and 4 of this report. Allocate grant awards above £50,000 from the wraparound grant funding of £2.678 million, where set out in the Wraparound Delivery Plan in accordance with section 4.5.2 of this report. And agree the strategy for the allocation of the Capital Childcare Expansion Grant of £849,000 for Extended Entitlement and Wraparound Care Provision prior to allocation being submitted for approval by the Finance Committee as set out in section 4.5.3 of this report. Number four, note the decision at three above will only be exercised by the Strategic Director of Children's Services, pursuant to the Childcare Reforms Governance Board's process as set out in section five of this report. I hope you've all read these sections. Note that the local authority delivers a port grant of £102,000 is to be retained centrally by the local authority in accordance with the grant's terms to cover administrative costs for the implementation of the Extended Entitlement Delivery Plan as set out in section 4.5.1 of this report. Note that £294,000 or 11% of the wraparound grant funding is to be retained centrally by the local authority in accordance with the grant terms to cover administrative costs for the implementation of the Wraparound Delivery Plan as set out in section 4.5.2 of this report. And to note that a further update of the childcare reforms will be presented at future committee. Do we all agree? Oh, councillor Turpin.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I have no intention whatsoever of holding this up and, and letting our officers get on with it. I just want to ask really, Dawn, what is your view on the lower hourly rates that Sheffield's getting? And is, do we need to know more about that? Um, because obviously we want more money.
So can I come back to you um around that and I'll, I'll make sure there's a briefing? Um, because I suspect it's the amount that's been allocated to us overall and that that breaks down the hourly rate and that's a national issue. But if I can, if I can get that information to you and then we can go from there.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea. What I, what I am aware of is that the money that does come down from government does go out. So when it comes to our hourly rate per child, we don't top slice in Sheffield. All the money that we get goes out into the sector. And the decisions about this are made at the schools, we're not the schools forum, but there is early years representation at that schools forum. So that's where the decisions are made and there is someone there. But I think it would be better if we could get a, a briefing out to all members. So I just, I think not just of this committee, but so that all members understand um where that uh amount has come from. So we don't, as a local authority, we don't take money out of that, it goes straight out into the sector. But I will, we will double check for you. Apart from that then, are we all in, oh, Jo.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, and this, I know this isn't the, the norm, but I wanted to really thank everyone who's been involved in this work, particularly Cathy Tandy, but also our colleagues across uh legal, finance, et cetera, because it's been an incredibly complex piece of work. Um, so many thanks.
Thank you, Jo. So are we all in agreement with the recommendations? Any dissent? No. So that's agreed. Thank you very much. So we have now the agenda item 13, which um is our Community Parenting Plan. And it does say corporate parenting plan on your documents, which is on page number 215 of your agenda reports pack. And it's Izzy who's coming to present today. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. Um, so I've come to present the proposed priorities for corporate parenting and our proposed approach to implementing this strategy. Um, young people have been involved throughout consultation in this proposed strategy. And they've requested that moving forward, when we refresh our corporate parenting strategy, we refer to it as a community parenting strategy. So that's um the proposal that I've made. Community parenting, to remind you, is that collective citywide responsibility of Sheffield City Council, our partners and our communities to achieve good parenting for all our cared, experienced children and young people. Making Sheffield a place where care, experienced children and young people belong and build successful futures. Fundamental to this is the need to understand and act on the views and interests and experience of these young people. I've stayed recognised last year that shef, in Sheffield, participation is our strength. This strategy is a response to what young people have told us we need, that needs to happen to make life good for them. The priorities outlined, four of the priorities are aligned to Bright Spot Survey, which I discussed earlier, which is one of our key vehicles for consulting with our cared-for population. And the last priority is in recognition of the work that um our carers do looking after young people. I'm presuming everybody's had a chance to have a read.
Oh, yeah, I've read it. Uh, has anybody got any questions or comments regarding the uh Community Parenting Strategy? If I can, if I can say something, I'm gonna anyway, because I'm chair, so I can. Uh, Izzy and Saleh and Meredith and all of the team, our Volts and Influence workers and Claire and Claire. Um, I'd just like to thank everyone that's been involved in, first of all, getting us the good with Outstanding Offsted. Because that was just, you know, a really special moment that we, you know, which is just something onwards and upwards to outstanding across the board from now on, I'm, I'm sure. Uh, and thank you for putting together and working with everyone to do our Community Parenting Strategy and for working with and listening to young people about the things that they wanted to change in it. And uh, and hopefully moving forward now through our Corporate Parenting Board, these will be the priorities that we'll be working on. What I would ask is that all members, uh, and I know, uh, all officers have heard me say this over and over again, and most members have, is that we are all community parents and that we all have, whether you're on the Corporate Parenting Board or not, we all have a responsibility, no matter which committee you're on, no matter what meeting you're in, no matter what, what, what public environment you're in. We are all uh community parents. And I just think if you could take this back to your groups um and express to them how important this is for them to read and look through. Um, I think that would just be really important because on every committee that we have in Sheffield, it is young people and I look after young people that we really do need to take into consideration when making decisions. So I'd just like to say thank you, um, because this is a really exciting document. Um, and this will help us to make sure that our looked after children are well looked after and loved. Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Okay, so we've got, oh, a small recommendation this time, thank you. So we're asking that the committee approve uh the corporate parenting strategy as set out in appendix one. Are we all agreed? That's great. Thank you very much. Thanks Izzy. Okay, so we've got agenda item number 14 and that is the SEND SEF and Transformation work on to page 245. And it's Rosemary Ward who's coming to represent today.
Afternoon, everybody. Um, so I've come to present the um SEND an AP, so, sorry, SEND an Alternative Provision Self-Evaluation Framework. Um, that's linked to the Ofsted framework, the SEND an AP Ofsted framework that was released in January 2023. Um, so we have to have the SEND area SEF and we need to be able to submit that to the Ofsted and CQC when our SEND area inspection um happens. So it's got 11 areas plus alternative provision that's been identified um as areas that you need to evidence what your improvement and sufficiency activities are. And it's all about how we, how we enable and empower our young people through their journey of SEN. And that's across education, health and care. So while I'm sitting here today, obviously presenting it, answering questions, I know Meredith will be keen to come in on any questions as well. But this is a partnership document, so this is partnership with education, health and care colleagues. It extends into the early years, into our communities directorate. So this is really a collaborative approach to meeting the needs of children with special educational needs and helping them hopefully to a positive outcome in, in terms of meeting their aspiration, ambition for their futures.
Thank you. Uh, has anyone got any questions on this document? Councillor Haby?
On page, I don't know what page this is. It's 257, 257, 256, those two pages. Um, it says here the stay in your lane advice giving. Could you expand on that part? I don't understand, is that educational psychologists taking a step back? Or is that, yeah, could you just explain that? I just didn't understand that.
Certainly, yeah. So uh what we're trying to do is make sure that when advice is given into education, health and care needs assessments, that people are advising around their own areas of expertise. Uh, because what we sometimes find is that you might get somebody from a different area advising what should happen in a, another area. And sometimes what the advice, advise isn't possible. And then that can lead to a compromising term or compromising a situation of child support because that hasn't been feasible to be able to deliver. So what we're trying to say is please give advice in your own area. So we know the advice then is, is um, has fidelity and that it is deliverable within the services that are available. Um, that's not, but what we're trying to also do in that space is make sure that there is a joint assessment process that happens. So everybody has that opportunity to share what the advice, what the support, what the provision could be. Because then we're all hearing from everybody and it puts parents and children at the centre of the process. So it's expertise, make sure the expertise is, is in the right areas, but go working towards that joint assessment approach.
Thank you. And I think this, in the same section, it seems like there's going to be a holistic take on the training offer. EPS makes to children in the city instead of like an individual or a school-based system. A part of me thinks that may overlook certain children. Um, anything that has a holistic outlook on the city, I always think that way. Am I looking at it correctly? Is, is that what it's saying? And only highlighting those four specific points? And maybe Meredith can come in here as well. Um, on page, it says five here, but I know it's not five. 256 or 257? Under, yeah, educational psychology.
Page 257, there's a heading Educational Psychology. And then the third bullet point says the EPS will define their training offers, offer. And this will become a citywide offer rather than a school-by-school demand-led offer. It will focus on the citywide priorities. I think that's what you're saying.
Okay, I can come in on that one, that's fine. So what we're trying to make sure is that there is a citywide training offer that is complementary to the priorities of the city, but also that complement each of the training offers that's available. What we also have though, and I think the inclusion model's been discussed here and it's certainly outlined within the, um, within the SEF as well. What we're trying to say is this is the citywide offer so that it's universally available across our education providers. But through the inclusion model, we'll be able to localise what the training and support offers are. So there is the universally available across our education providers. So there is the universally available plus then the defined, uh, training offers within areas of the city, uh, through the inclusion model. So it's not that's all they will deliver ever, it's that's what will be part of their universal, um, training offer across the board.
So an example of that might be that, um, there is autism training for, um, run by EPS for all, um, SENCOs in the city, but locality C, C is specialising in speech, language and communication. So there's something, um, different, uh, which brings in speech, language and community, speech, language and communication therapists.
Thank you. Just wanted some clarification.
Councilor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair, and, and thank you for, for the report. Know, knowing that a lot of parents, um, that have children with special educational needs, um, do have trouble, um, getting their kids to the point where they're actually assessed. And then there's the whole issue of getting, getting the child into a, a school that can, can take them. Are we getting any better at identifying special educational needs? Just wondered if we have any empirical evidence, you know, from where we are, say, compared to five or 10 years ago?
Yeah, I'm back on, yeah. Sorry, I had a minor panic. Um, so, um, so actually our, our timeliness of assessment is, is, is good. Um, so, uh, in comparison to national, um, the timescale, uh, 20 weeks time scales of making sure that there's an education, health and care plan is good. But the problem with looking at KPIs is that you don't necessarily look at what is underneath that. And we have a SEND system nationally, which, um, isn't necessarily working in the best way. So in that sense, we've already talked about the fact that we've got special schools that are over capacity. Um, we've got a huge increase. So again, whilst we're maintaining those KPIs, there has been a huge increase in the number of children, parents seeking assessments for their children. And that's also seen a increase in the number of children who are in mainstream schools. The main areas of increase are neurodiversity and social, emotional, mental health, and then in SEND support, which is that step before an EHCP, is speech, language and communication. So when you look at that in the round, you kind of, um, in my head, I think if we got far better speech, language and communication support in earlier, we could address some of the issues. That's not that, um, there are, that children don't have autism, but actually, um, some children who are on the Rye Gate waiting list, which is the list for the autism, um, that a number of them have developmental learning delay. And actually, that's linked to speech, language and communication. So how do we support to prevent that escalation? Because if you do have an autism assessment, um, what you, you won't remain on the consultants' list in, in, in the Sheffield Children's Hospital. You'll be offered a parenting programme to support with, um, supporting your child who's got autism. So again, how do we make sure that we're putting our money in the right place to support our children, prevent escalation of needs? So we're doing well and the CEF shows that we are doing well as a, a city, but we can do a lot better. And there are a number of parents who don't feel that they have the right support. Um, there's schools who don't feel that they have the right support. How do we get even better at what we're doing so that, um, there are, you know, that, that hopefully we get to a point where every child feels that they belong in their school, that every child, um, needs are met without necessarily having to have an assessment. So that's, that's sort of the aspiration, but, um, that needs a national system that's also funded appropriately and works well.
Thank you, Meredith. Oh, Councilor Hayby?
Um, if you can answer this, I wonder if every child in the city, and because there's still issues with EHCPs, there's a mothers autism group that comes in fortnightly into the council and they're still complaining. I think, no, so my question is if every child in the city had good quality assessments, they all got their EHCPs, what would the financial impact be on the council? Would it be positive? Because we don't hire as many lawyers or would it be negative?
Well, it's a really difficult question to ask, but, um, uh, you know, uh, so if you were, you were asking for utopia and every child, so every child got the amount of money that they, they deserved.
Just EHCPs, yeah, basically, yeah.
Well, um, the DSG would be, so it's not the council funding, it's this Dedicated Schools Grant, the Dedicated Schools Grant would be hugely, um, overspent, um, whi, which is a risk for the council, um, but, but, but in that sense, if you were looking at utopia. But actually, there's things that we can do and we're all, we always look for how we can be as efficient as possible. Well, we know that to be, actually to have better outcomes for children. So we also know that having an EHCP doesn't mean that you attain better. Um, so actually, it's likely to be that you attain slightly worse. If you're on SEND support, you attain better. So it's, it's actually in our, in our interest for more children to be, um, SEND support and we're putting the right preventative measures in earlier. So actually, you feel like you can engage with your curriculum, you feel that you belong in your school and you then go on to attain. So there's a, there's a, there's a big conversation we need to have as a city as to what's important to us. And actually, an EHCP is a piece of paper, it's an assessment. It doesn't mean that you're going to, um, get the GCSEs, um, you know, it's, it's about how do we make sure that you're getting the attainment, the curriculum that you, um, need and that you can attain and can go on to all of those things. It's not, it's not the assessment per se, it's the, it's the, the wraparound support that comes with it. And actually, you can do that, I think, at an earlier stage, which has more benefit for the child.
I, I, I think you've helped me realise two things. I think parents think EHCPs are the lifeline. So now that's a whole narrative conversation. And earlier you mentioned, and well, we mentioned the 98% statistic for tribunals and our parents think that's all they're aiming for. I think what we've kind of realised today is it's a narrative thing rather than the actual EHCPs or assessments. Is that correct? Well, not the whole thing, but yeah.
I just think the utopia would be if all parents with children with special educational needs and disabilities felt that the school that their child was in catered to their needs and that we could put early intervention in, that we could spot things and put in support prior to needing an EHCP. I think that the, the bat, it is a battle for parents, isn't it? That have got children with special needs, that they're constantly having to fight and constantly having to battle and constantly having to justify their children's needs. But if we could create schools and environments where an individual's child's needs were being met by putting in speech and language early, by putting in additional wraparound support for those children, I think that for me would be the utopia. It wouldn't be making sure that every child had an EHCP, but that doesn't mean to say that children don't need an EHCP. I don't want to undermine that model, but what would be really good is if parents felt that the schools where their children were in and the schools that their children were transitioning to, because let's not forget, quite often families feel more supported when their children are in primary, because it's a safer space. And the, the worry about having your child move up to a secondary school where it's a bit more grown up and a bit more independent and you're not quite sure. I think if we got that, the fundamentals right there and parents felt like there was somebody to speak to if they'd got an issue without being looked at or just another SEND parent where, you know, they're, they're here again. And I know that because I've been there myself, I've, I've experienced that and I've, you know, all of our case will, will be a lot of around that as well. So I can't really answer your question around the EHCPs, I'll let Meredith come back in on that. But for me, I think if we can create an environment where parents feel heard, where children feel supported and valued early on, I don't want to undermine the needs of children, but I think if we can identify that in a local school where we could offer that support, um, that would be the utopia. I don't, I don't know if that's answered your question or if that's just a bit fluffy.
No, no, I think it has. It's maybe, yeah, I think a lot of parents, even if they have that support you've mentioned, will fixate on this EHCP. So it's that longer conversation.
So just, just to reassure as well, it is really important we get the EHCPs right, that they are used in the best way possible, that they are action-driven and that children's, um, children, it is, it is so that children can improve. Um, and we need to get that better as well. But there's a, a conversation about recalibration as well, I think that we need nationally.
Uh, Councilor Whitaker.
I think the problem is that parents see an EHCP as the holy grail and it will solve all their child's problems, because their child will get all the support they need. And I think we've still got, where some schools provide excellent support to children who have set special educational needs and other schools not so good if they haven't got a diagnosis. And I think it all pushes parents into an EHCP. And I think whenever, if, if schools start off by providing support and then that support is either not enough or not working or whatever, it again pushes parents down to the HCP route. And quite often, when you get casework, it's very difficult to kind of say to parents you don't actually need, because they put all their energies and all their focuses. And it's a case of if the council won't give me one, you know, then I'll take them to court for one and things. And that's, in some ways, I think it's a waste of their energy. Their energy should be put into other things. Um, but I think that's, that they just see it as, as holy grail. So I think it's, yeah.
So part of the work that we are, are doing, so again, you know, there has been, there is a, a real, um, link between, um, Covid and an increase in need. Um, uh, and, uh, again, it's how do we support schools? Because actually, uh, the, the, the increase has been, um, in some senses, over an 18-month period, schools are, are, are supporting children with ever more complex needs. Well, that's about how we come together as a system to support schools, to show the good practice where inclusion is working really well, to make sure that the right mechanism's in place, to support, to ensure that parents and children do have the right educate, education, health and care plans. All of those things are in our, are, i- is in what we're doing at the moment and our plans for the future. But there is, and I think that most people would say, there is a national conversation we need to have, which says that what we've got at the moment isn't necessarily sustainable for the future. We do need to have a system where we're making sure that, um, uh, children have, do have their needs met in their local school and the local schools are able to accommodate, um, all of their, all, all the children in their community really well.
Thank you, Meredith. This is really a, a very emotional topic, I think, especially for any parents watching that have got children and they're waiting for an EHCP or they've been through that journey or they're worried about that. I think we, we are working in Sheffield really hard, I think, and we've not always got it right, but I think there is that review and there is looking at how we can make, um, en- ensure that parents feel valued and that their children are cared about really. And we, we just want to get it right for everyone. Okay. Thank you. Have you got any more questions or comments, um, on this paper? No? Okay, so the recommendation is that this committee note the overview of the Special Educational Needs and Disabilities and Alternative Provision Area Self-Evaluation Framework and Expected Updates. Are we all agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. Yes, Meredith?
Uh, so just around the anomalies in the early years funding, I'll just, um, uh, so, um, there is, uh, there is an anomaly in the national funding allocation. Our income levels from national government are much lower than other cities. We have written to ministers and ESFA several times to increase our income levels. We have benchmarked with other, um, local authorities as well, and I have to share that information with, um, uh, committee.
Can we send that information out with me?
Yeah.
Okay, so our final item on the agenda is, uh, update from the Strategic Director of Children's Services. Over to you, Meredith. Page 305 on your pack.
Uh, so I'm not going to read it to you. Um, you're hopefully getting used to, um, this. This gives a update into the work that the team and I have undertaken since last committee and some of the areas, um, that we are, are looking at. Um, so again, I'm happy to take, um, questions around anything and, uh, also at some stage, if you are finding it, uh, useful, um, summary as well of what we are doing and what we are focusing on.
So any questions or comments from Meredith's report? No? So are we all happy this is just for noting? Are we all okay with that? Thank you very much. That concludes, um, the meeting, um, today. Um, thank you for subs that have come along, I hope you've enjoyed it. I'm sorry it's been so cold. And the meeting of the next, uh, Education, Children and Families Policy Committee is on the 19th of March. Thank you.